Right.
If you go in, it was what line it made.
So they said.
So the barges were going out and nowhere to go.
Exactly.
Yeah, we had that.
So if he didn't pay.
Those are our.
Your money. Still be very much.
All right.
They're both gone. So I see it as. There's no way to lose on it, so.
How we doing?
That makes it pretty easy.
It was less than five thousand. Hello, sir.
He's taking care of that. He's taking care of that.
Did you really?
Yeah. And I'm sure.
But it's for the. They don't do. I want you to.
Everybody please turn on their cell phones. I call the June twenty first, twenty twenty two council meeting to order a declarative quorum, barely. Everybody please stand for the flag student remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Dear God, please preside over this meeting. Guide us with our different opinions to give us unity. Help us to listen politely to each other and share each other's points of view. Help us to work together as a unified team in order to combine our ideas for a greater outcome. May we work together on our shared mission to better the citizens of War Acres. May we always have our citizens in mind to bring about the right outcomes. May we always pray for our police officers and firefighters as they go into harm's way daily. In your name we pray, amen. Item two is a consent docket. This has been expanded somewhat since Pam is not here tonight to make it easier on Veronica. Items A through L and item three items to be removed from the consent docket. By the way, items J and K are just they're swapping positions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent docket. Second.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Item four receive reports from staff chief Patty.
I've got nothing to add.
Thank you. Chief Coy.
I don't have anything to add either, thank you.
City clerk. Assistant city clerk. City attorney.
Have to say that Mark and I had a long call today that was preceded by two wonderful planning commission meetings talking about a piece of property that was looking for a lot split and some sewer access issues that may not actually be an issue after all for us.
Someone knows later on.
And I won't steal your thunder. Though it's interesting when you've got somebody that wants a lot split that already has two lots that don't need to be split.
Public Works Director Mike.
Just a reminder, next month is bulky waste, starting in July will be the fifth, so wards one first week and so forth.
Thank you. City engineer Craig.
Nothing other than the report and the items that we have on the agenda later.
Thank you. City planner. Good, working out good. Item five is for a public hearing. This is the one he was just talking about promotion. I think the planning commission had a motion to table this.
So the planning commission, this was on your agenda last month. We asked you to table it before the public hearing so that it could come back this month to see if planning commission would make a recommendation. Just as an FYI for things Title nineteen, you don't get to act until planning commission makes a recommendation. Commission did not make a recommendation and said they tabled the item indefinitely with it coming back to the commission at the request of the applicant. So the request would be that you tabled the item indefinitely to be brought back before you if a recommendation comes from the commission.
Which is exactly what I just said.
I'll make a motion to table it, the item indefinitely until it comes back to the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Tucker, you second that? Evans.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Ryan.
Yay.
Mayor.
Yay.
Incidentally, I don't think it'll come back before you because it turns out that they want to create two pieces of property that are already two pieces of property and the main issue was a lack of access to the city sewer system and we found a nineteen seventy seven deed for the property to the east that had a reserved twenty foot utility in sewer East for the benefit of the properties to the west. So we're Mark and I are going to send a letter to both the applicant and to the adjacent property owner, just outlining what we found and telling them to consult with their own professionals to see how they want to move forward.
Item number six discussion possible action on condemnation and demolition of a house located at sixty twenty five Northwest Fifty Seventh Street. We have their attorney here tonight and.
To clarify, the attorney for the mortgage company.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct. I'm the attorney for Senator Marcus, the service attorney of the mortgage.
Would you mind coming up to the microphone here so we can get your name and everything? It makes a whole lot easier on her when she's trying to transcribe everything.
It's Shannon Taylor, T A Y L O R.
Thank you.
I have been in contact with my client. This is really a unique situation. I've been doing this about eighteen years. I did go by and view the property. This is a situation where we had a foreclosure referral on this property and we were halfway through the foreclosure process, then a bankruptcy was filed by the borrower. The borrower brought the loan current through bankruptcy. We dismissed our foreclosure action and the bankruptcy was dismissed and then the borrower died. So that's the situation. So my client is in the process of ordering an appraisal on the property. I know time is of the essence. I've been by the property and I understand that there's been a lot of complaints. We would simply ask for time to do that. It could be that the mortgage company decides to pay for a demolition itself and foreclose on the raw land. It could be that they try to remediate. I don't think they will based on what I've seen, but we would ask just for a little bit of time, thirty days.
You think thirty days will take care of it?
I think I'm going to put pressure on them that they need to have have it completed.
Does anybody on the council have a problem? Give them thirty days.
I don't have any problem. My recommendation, just because they have to go through the process, there is a possibility that if you tabled it for a month, that they'd be on the eve of the appraisal. My recommendation would be table it to, let's see, we're in June, to your August regular meeting, at which point that will give them the time to go do the work. There's from talking, there's not a lot left on the note.
That's correct. It was paid fully down on the principal balance through the bankruptcy. I know that there was a probate and there are two heirs. I've been trying to get in contact with those heirs to see if they, because that's the situation we're in. They're the title holders to the property. So, you know, obviously the mortgage company under the mortgage can preserve and protect its lien and so they're going to do that. I've been in contact with Cheryl and I can continue to do that. I think I'll know something as early as two weeks. The appraisal's already been ordered. Now it's just a matter of getting it done.
Our August meeting will be August sixteenth, can we?
I would like to make a motion to table to our August meeting.
Thank you.
August sixteenth at six P M.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Yay.
Myers.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yeah.
Evans.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. And now so we can stop paying people at this time, we're going to move item twelve up on the agenda. Need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Ryan.
Yay.
Tucker.
Yay.
Myers.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yay.
Yes, and this shouldn't take very long. We'll be back as soon as we can.
Back to sessions, no action taken. And now we're gonna go to, uh, we're just gonna drop back down to item number 11. This item is for Mark Nestland to give the council an update on where their HOA stands with Tony Meeks Moonlight Development. We have issued notices of violations to Meeks Company. That company has turned over the land to the HOA. We can only issue violations to the property owner listed on the county assessors webpage. The HOA doesn't feel that everything was supposed to, that was supposed to be done before turning this over was done. I told Mark we'd give him five minutes before the council to explain the situation. And it's a conflict basically between Meeks and the HOA, but not, not the city, but Mark, your side.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Mark Nestland, chairman of the Cherokee Crossing, president of Cherokee Crossing Homeowners Association, 7024 Cherokee Crossing East. The mayor passed out a 30-page packet for you with some pretty pictures that I told Mike if I started scratching tonight, I'm sure that I got into some poison somewhere today taking those pictures. The first page of your, of your packet shows the two pieces of common area in question so that as we're looking at these pictures, you have an idea where they are. In the little piece towards the top left, that's Daxton Court, that short cul-de-sac. The long cul-de-sac on the other way is Richardson Court, and then that road that comes down between the two is Hidden Trail Lane, so that you have a read of where that at. Page two that you'll see that you've notified Meek of, uh, Moonlight Development is Tony Meeks. You'll see that you cited him in January 17. We were a little confused at the time why our name wound up being on it as well, but if you look at page three, that helps you understand because he improperly attempted to transfer the property to the HOA without our knowledge back in December. And actually, he achieved making that transfer without any knowledge of the HOA on May the 17th. And actually, he uses some address in Edmund when he makes his transfer, so we don't even have any idea where he transferred it to. You'll notice that he did that on May the 17th as a result of the city sending out two more notices on May the 12th on the two pieces of property in question because of the problems that existed. And you see those violations from the city to Moonlight Development on page four and five. If you get to page six, there's a group of six, seven small pictures at the top. That is what Daxton Court and Hidden Trail looked like at the time that you cited that. And I will tell you that it's looked like that for a long, long time because we've been trying to work with him to get his mess cleaned up. So that's looked like that for a good four or five months when the mayor and Mike and came out and we walked through this property back in May and then made those citations. The picture at the bottom on page six is what that intersection there at Daxton and Hidden Trail looked like after Meeks did in fact do a partial cleanup of that after the citation, which is interesting from the perspective that he was cited. He then snuck the property into the name of the HOA, but still went back and cleaned up a portion of that property. But if you'll see in that picture, there's still a big mound of dirt, and that's a mound of dirt that he moved from over in the section five area as he was selling that property to Tabor. He just dumped that load over there for whatever reason, and so that was dirt that he moved from that perspective. When you get to page seven, this is what Daxton Court at Hidden Trail looks like today. And you'll see that in fact, now since he cleaned it up, there's actually more dumping that is coming from somewhere of his builders that are on there. And there's the dark with the concrete is new dumping that has occurred on that property now within the last week to 10 days after he cleaned that up. And then if you just continue through, page eight is just showing you the overgrowth there. These are still all pictures from Daxton Court and Hidden Trail. And as I say, these are from 9:30 this morning, so these are current pictures of, of what that area is at. Page nine, you just can continue to see the overgrowth in the area that he had not maintained. Page 10, you will see that as they were dumping the material on this piece of property, you can see the damage that was done to the sidewalk. As the mayor and I discussed, uh, in this property sidewalks are required throughout the property. And so this sidewalk that they had put in has been damaged to the point that obviously this would be a hazard, particularly when you're looking at the fact that it's a handicap ramp right there next to where this damage has been caused at. And again, that's the corner of Daxton Court and Hidden Trail Lane. When you go to page 11, these are now pictures from Hidden Trail Lane at Richardson Court. And this is going up the hill to Hidden Trail. So you'll see the overgrowth there and that, where you can't see from this picture, you'll see in a minute, this is where that concrete drainage comes through there. And the bottom picture on page 11 is just because I laugh every time I go through there. Those are three tiles from construction that have laid in that corner of that intersection for over two years. That they haven't even, that they don't even pick up their construction debris that's laid on the road for two years. Now you get on page 12, now you're going up Hidden Trail. You can see trash, they've got building pallets thrown out in the area. And you can see there where that concrete drainage systems comes through there. Getting over to page 13, this is now looking back behind those houses on Richardson Court. You can see the overgrowth that's come up to their fence and see where that drainage comes through that middle. Page 14, just, these are just things to show you when you get into that large piece of property on Hidden Trail, there is so much debris in there, chunks of cement. Because if, you won't necessarily know because it didn't come before the city council, that pile of stuff we saw at Daxton Court, now that pile of stuff used to be over on this property on Hidden Trail until he finally cleaned that up once. So you've got all this debris left in there to where if you even went in and tried to mow this, you're gonna be in trouble because there's so much cement and rocks and things that are laying in there. When you get to pages 15 and 16, you're now starting to see the erosion that has happened on this property that has been caused because of the slope on this and because he hasn't maintained any erosion control on this property. So you can see the erosion on 15, you can see a greater degree of the erosion on 16. And page 17 is actually the last residence house leading into that common property. Because of him not controlling that erosion, you're seeing the erosion under the fence of the property owner leading down into that property. And then page 18 just shows you his tremendous erosion control techniques as you've got just watered up erosion control fencing just laying around. Page 19 is not of that property, but it's of the detention pond. And you can see that this is looking down the detention pond, um, towards 72nd from Hidden Trail. And this is the problem with the detention pond, is that because of the erosion from this property we're talking about, plus the erosion from the section five property when he, when they had that mound of dirt back there, that has eroded, it had eroded so bad that the cement trench through that detention pond is completely plugged and it was caused by all that erosion that they allowed to happen on that property. So you can see the water can't even pass through the detention pond because of the way it's plugged up. That's why we've got trees growing in there and things like that. We try to keep the grass down, but that erosion they continue to build down through there is what's keeping us from being able to have that detention pond performance job. Once we get to page 20, I'm hurrying Mr. Mayor to get five minutes here. Once we get to page 20, this is at the end of Richardson Court. And you can see here that we've got a parcel that has no sidewalk ever put in here at the end of Richardson Court. Go to page 21, now we're in that same area at Richardson Court, and this is going up and around, around the back up to Grove Avenue. And you can see the, again, overgrowth around the homes. When you get into page 22 and then into page 23, you see as that comes up and around towards Grove that you've got damage in there that occurred during the ice storm of what, two years ago or whenever it was, that was never cleaned up on this property. Then when you get up to, uh, the head of the drainage on that property at Grove, these pictures start showing you that drainage that goes through from the point to where the cement ends coming down. There's natural drainage and then goes back into it. And this is where I'm sure I got into some poison today because as you go through this, you can see the debris, the trees that are down, everything that's gonna keep anything from draining through here to get down to the, uh, to the cement drainage. And that's just, you've seen that on pages 27, 28. And then on page 29, that's actually, uh, at the head there of where that natural drainage comes into the cement that leads on out through the detention pond. And you can see that water is laying in there because again, all of this failure to maintain all of this has been done. So that is about common area four. You cited him, um, you've cited him more than once, it goes all the way back to January. And his, uh, uh, terminal lawyer used with me, his clever by half, is that he decided he'd just send it over and make it property of the HOA without any knowledge of the transfer whatsoever. Colin Walkie, as you know, is our attorney. He has in fact sent a letter to Mr. Meeks attorney, um, trying to see what we're gonna do. Before I go to the last page, I would just ask that the mayor and the city attorney have a conversation as to what is the city's situation here? Since the city cited Tony Meeks when he was the owner of the property, and since Tony Meeks has transferred this property to the HOA without any agreement from the HOA for the transfer, where can the city be with us on this issue? Because we're, as you can see here, we're talking 20, $30,000 worth of activity that Tony Meeks has failed to fulfill in his obligation. The last piece I have in my last 30 seconds hopefully, is the last page of page 30. And this will actually cause you to chuckle a little bit because this is in section one. This is the pavilion for those of you who are familiar with this piece of property. Well, guess what, Meeks Development has never transferred the pavilion to the HOA. In, despite the fact that we have many times told him about that. However, when you start looking at the process, guess what? There's no sidewalk at Cherokee Plaza and Cherokee Crossing, and this is still owned by Meeks Development. And so I think that there's a role there definitely, no matter what we can do with the games he's played on section four. I think we've definitely got a role that the city could do something in citing him or forcing him to put a sidewalk into this piece of property since he has not been, um, inclined to make the transfer of that property yet. Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions or...
I think we've gotten past our five minutes, but I'll work with Matt and we'll see if we can get whatever we can get for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion of possible action on, to accept replenish recycling company to do our recycling for our tin cans, aluminum cans, plastics one and two, cardboard on a trial basis from August to October with the city continuing to recycle glass in the dumpsters like is currently being done. Place an item on the October agenda to discuss and take possible action based on the feedback from the trial run, whether or not to continue using replenish recycling company. One thing I would like to say before we go into that, is I would like to say that if we pass this agenda for recycling, that we remove glass from the agenda. No one will take glass. People are bringing their glass to us because no one else will take it. We're now hauling it to the dump. There's no reason for anyone to sort glass and drive it to our recycling only to have it taken to the dump. One to sort glass and drive it to our recycling only to have it taken to the dump. Recycling we're, and are actually making money off of this, we can open this up to anyone and not just War Acres. I know that no one paid attention to this just being for War Acres, but that forgotten rule won't make a difference anymore. But this will be the War Acres Recycling and absolutely not the Bethany War Acres Recycling. So with that, I'll let Mike have it.
Hi. Okay, I thought we would break this up into separate parts. And then we'll let the public talk as well. But the first part I wanted Mike to talk about what we currently do and how much it's costing the city now to do what we're doing and where the recycling is going now.
Okay, basically, I see some recycling ladies here. Basically, we have three 17-yard collection dumpsters at the Public Works Yard. Last month, we collected roughly 1,000 pounds of glass bottles uncrushed. Waste management charges $125 a ton as a tipping fee. So if we had, you know, roughly two tons, it would exceed our 17-yard dump fee, which is somewhere around 150 to $170 per 17-yarder. For aluminum, we collected approximately 100 pounds. Tin was roughly 111 pounds. And plastic was a full container, which based on the EPA's estimated uncompacted weight per cubic yard, 40 pounds, roughly 800 pounds. Waste management is paying $100 per ton, so that would be roughly what, somewhere around $40 maybe? A plastic in a 17 cubic yard, uh, container. So there's not a lot of volume, as you can see here, so, um, that's pretty much it.
Excuse me, I have a question. How much would it cost to take that same glass tonnage to the dump?
Yeah, if we were to haul it directly to the landfill, a 17-yarder is somewhere depending on the weight, from about $150 to maybe $170.
So what, and in fact, it would cost you a lot more to take it to the dump and to then recycle it because you also have to factor into that the guys on the trash trucks going from residence to residence to pick this stuff up. So it really would cost a lot more just to take it to the dump, even though it's costing us money to take it to recycling. The cost is more at the waste dump.
But Jane, Jane, nobody will take it for recycling, is it being taken to the dump?
What I'm saying, to refute the fact that everybody wants to say that it costs so much money to recycle, it would still cost you a lot more money to recycle any of it if you took it. if you took it to landfill. Because that's all I'm saying, which is very important.
I think, I think you're incorrect. I'm thinking you're incorrect. We haven't got any, I think Mike will back me up on this. We've got no place we can take the glass to. It just goes to the dump. Nobody wants the glass. And for somebody to sit there and sort out all their glass into the browns and the clearers and whatever, and to do all that work and to drive it to the recycling place to take it to the dump, it doesn't make sense to me.
I don't refute that at all. I think it's a waste of time to do that, in fact, if that's the case. I'm just saying that no matter what the product is, the cost to take it to landfill is more than the cost to take it to recycle. That's all I'm saying.
If they will take it at the recycling?
I mean, I mean, they would, they would take it at the recycling. So if we, let's see, how cubic feet?
So if we took it to landfill, it would cost over a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, but I mean, we're not going to take it half full. I mean, we'd wait till it was filled up, so it'd probably be roughly three tons, maybe. So it could be roughly three hundred dollars for them to take it at the recycling center versus maybe a hundred and seventy at the landfill. Or if we just put it into the, to the regular residential trucks, that's, you know, they're already there, so...
You're still not factoring in the time with people on the truck, like residents to residents on the dumpster, as if they were collecting it from the landfill.
Right.
That's just a point here.
Sure.
So I think I had a question for Mike then. If, let's say we, we get out glass and it just goes in, the garbage men pick up the glass with the trash, we would get nothing for that, right? But at least we get something for the glass, or do we not get nothing for the glass ever?
They're, they're charging us to take it there and dump it.
Right, so it's costing us.
Correct.
Okay, so, so like, and that's what, we were under the understanding for years that when we were recycling, it was going to the recycling. And what's happening was, it's been going to the dump.
Well, you know, there, there was, there was a point, yeah, there was a point in 2015 where recycling, you'll remember China wanted all the plastics, they were taking the glass and we were getting some monies for it. But once the fuel costs started to increase, then they started coming up with the tipping fees. So that's when we just figured out, well, we're, you know, we're spending more taking it down there and emptying it than just letting it be picked up by the curbside or just taking the whole dumpster full down to the, to the landfill, so.
Yeah, so, you know, I wanted to break this up into different parts and then I wanted to have Matt talk, because he went to Bartlesville. And, you know, we're trying to do this as, at least we are recycling and we know that this will get recycled with the plastics and everything else, whereas right now, it's all going to the landfill. So every month that we're going out there, we're not getting, we're not accomplishing anything, at least we're...
Are they even the tin cans and the aluminum?
Every, every, if, right, right now, that's what's happening, correct?
It just depends if there's not very, very much of it.
So when you get it up, you don't take that to landfill?
Sometimes we take it to, to the recycling.
And part of it depends on whether they're taking it at that time. If our, if our container is full and they won't take it, we have to take it to the dump so we can empty the container.
Right, so it's just, it's actually costing us more to take it to the dump than if we were just to do it the way we were doing it, so. So then Matt was going to talk about his trip, so I'll let Matt take it from here then.
So, perfect timing after the last meeting, I already had a meeting up in Bartlesville with their city manager and went up and met with him. To give you an idea on him, he's a CPA, former auditor, outside auditor, who became a CFO for a city, did that for a long time and then became city manager. Pretty blunt kind of guy who's going to tell you the good and the bad and not sugarcoat it. I was almost taken aback because I've never seen him be so incredibly positive and not negative about something, because he'll usually tell you the good and the bad. He had nothing but good things to say about the relationship that they had with Replenish and noted that they went into it very, very skeptical about how the relationship would go. At the time, they were losing about a hundred thousand dollars a year on their recycling operation. At this point, they've cut all their costs and are now making money off the recycling. He didn't have the exact figure. Told me that the city is one of six drop-off points that Replenish has in Bartlesville, but the city site is the most heavily used. They, when the rep was here from Replenish last month, he might have given the impression that they've got a city employee that's out there monitoring it. Mike clarified for me that, no, literally, the only thing the Public Works employee does is opens up the gate in the morning and goes in the afternoon and shuts it, and shuts and locks the gate. After that, it's entirely self-service for the citizens. The only cost that they've incurred since going with Replenish and stopping their own city recycling is that the demand for glass became so high that they, Replenish asked if they would run a city electric line to a pole, that they would then hire the electrician to put a glass grinder, I think it's called, at the location because of the demand that they were having. He frankly had nothing but positive things to say about it. I sent a long email out, I'm guessing you guys got a copy of it, so I'm just kind of paraphrasing here. I was a little surprised, just because, like I said, I've known Mike for easily fifteen years at this point, and he's a CPA auditor who will tell you the good and the bad and he'll be pretty blunt and just to the point. The fact that he had nothing but good things to say and was very upfront that he was very skeptical about this company. He also added a little bit of insight that I found intriguing. When they did some background on Replenish, what they found was that Replenish was originally started to be a software company that was going to pair recycling centers with vendors who wanted recycled material, found themselves in a contract crunch when a big recycling center went down and they still had contracts to get materials to some of the vendors, and so they pivoted to becoming a recycling company themselves. He mentioned in particular that part of the reason that their costs were going up and that they were looking at doing something different like Replenish was that they had a big recycling center in Bartlesville that burned down. And so they were having to haul their recycling to Oklahoma City where, not to echo what Mike has and the mayor have been saying, they would arrive at Oklahoma City and oftentimes be turned down for the recycling and have to then pay to take it to the dump in Oklahoma City. So he, he has been, was effusive with his praise of the relationship they've got. Now, I said in the email, the fact that it's working in Bartlesville doesn't necessarily mean that it would work everywhere else. It's a different scale of operation. I found it interesting that it's not that exclusive relationship, it's just if you would do a drop-off site, we would take advantage of it and collect the materials and remit back to you what we get from your location. He said it's worked out incredibly well for them and that the citizens, they haven't heard of any issues with people putting things in the wrong bags. Essentially, that becomes Replenish's problem to deal with on their end, because as he said, they unlock and open up the gate in the morning, they go back and close it and lock it in the afternoon, and that's the only involvement city staff has. So that's the feedback I got from the city manager up in Bartlesville.
Matt, are they using, are they taking cardboard as well?
He said they're taking everything.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions for Matt before we move to the next part of it? Even from the public too?
You said they don't have an issue with contamination being not monitored?
If there is, it's on, essentially the way you put it is, if it is, it's on Replenish's side, because they're the ones that are taking care of all the bags and having to go through stuff. Literally, city staff opens the gate, closes the gate, and that's the extent of their involvement.
So, and I don't know who I would ask...
It could be that they're having the issues on Replenish's side, but he's never heard anything from Replenish.
I don't know who, who would be able to best answer this, but if there were contamination issues, would that decrease the amount of money that we would get in return?
Excuse me, I did ask, Randy Elmore was the gentleman that was here, I did ask him about contamination, and he said it wasn't a problem if they wanted things in there that had like a peanut butter jar that still had aluminum in it or stuff like that. He said it's not a problem. It doesn't, they would take it, we didn't have to throw it out. Like right now, we throw those out. Waste management, you know, no contamination. So he said it wasn't a problem.
If I, if I had to figure just from a practical standpoint, for it to rise to the level where they would actually look at the remittance to the city, the amount of staff time that that would take to calculate what the difference in weight it was, because I think the price that they quoted was by weight or by bag, I can't remember. My guess is that there's a certain amount that they factor in of having to deal with that that's just baked into the price. That's just an assumption on my part, but...
One of my, one of my concerns with it being unmonitored would be that, you know, somebody just with the trash bags that, oh, I got trash bags in my truck, and just go and just dump the whole bag, whether it's whatever, you know?
You're correct, that's why we have them behind the locked gates.
Well, but even during the daytime, you know, I mean, without it being monitored, that would be my biggest concern.
Yeah, they were, they were sitting outside the gates, you'd just come in off of Hammond, and people were using it for whatever, limbs, construction, couches. And so that's why it moved behind the gates. And also, to answer your question on the aluminum, we hauled a load down to Wilshire to collect the monies, and our guys were gone for like three hours, said, hey, what you guys been doing? He goes, well, they made us go through the dumpster because there was a lot of tin mixed into it, so they wouldn't take it. And so they spent two or three hours down there going through the seventeen yards. They had a huge load of aluminum.
They're supposed to, they're piled, so they gotta use person, they have to pick back, it's a problem.
Right, right. And we even reached out to the Boy Scouts to say, hey, here's this aluminum, y'all, are you interested in coming out? So no response.
So, anybody's, we can go the next part if you want, and I think, before we get to the next part, so Randy couldn't be here tonight, so Judy's been in communication with Replenish, so she's going to talk about her communication with them. But I know when we make this motion, we're going to keep the recycling the same Saturday, the first Saturday of the month, and see how it goes. But to do it that way, instead of having it unmonitored, because I think it'll be a giant mess if we leave it unmonitored, so.
Well, I think Replenish, when I talked to the sales director, Ryan Hart, he said that they could, number one, he was willing to work with the trial period and give us, say, there's no obligation if you don't like the system. And that he was, they will bring people, they'll have somebody out here when we start up our first month or two or three, that they'll be, have a representative here. They also have all kinds of literature that we can post and either put in newsletters, we can post on-site. People are rewarded by checking in, which I don't know what that is. And they get rewarded on stuff, and so it's, it's going to be a community involvement. And hopefully, this company's on the grow and that they'll be able to grow with us. But for this time, we've asked them if they would consider a trial period, and they said yes, and that they would have people here to help us. I don't know what other questions you might have that he may have answered. He did give me an idea of what Barnsville is making. Now granted, Barnsville is a lot bigger than War Acres, but they're, but they're bringing in about twelve hundred dollars a month.
And they are one of six.
And they do not pay on glass, so the glass even that they're collecting from Barnsville, they're not being paid on the glass. So it's just the plastics, cardboard, and tin and aluminum that they're paying on.
I'll say two things. On that, the city manager did tell me there are six locations Replenish has at Bartlesville, only one is at city, though the city manager did say in his opinion, it's the most heavily used of the six locations, but the other five are at just either a school or at a private company, because they'll essentially take locations wherever they can get them. The other thing I'll say, what Mike told me was the deal in Bartlesville is, they were looking for a rip and replace. They, they were looking to either stay in the recycle business where they handled it or pass it off to somebody else. Replenish was who they passed it off to, and so that's the way Replenish has handled it. I do wonder, part of the presentation we got from the very new representative that they had here last month, was trying to work within our existing framework and not do a rip and replace, we're just going to take over, recycle, more of a, you've got a recycling program, maybe here's what we could do to supplement it. And so I do think, I don't know if that's different than how it's been at other locations, I do think that, I get the impression their model is, we put the location there and people come and drop off as they do. And so I don't know if there are other locations that are doing sort of what I'll call a hybrid, where some things go to Replenish and other things are handled by the city. I, I just don't know. I know at Bartlesville, he made it clear, it was a rip and replace, they were losing a hundred grand a year on it. They were looking at something after the fire at their location and were spending man-hours and time and equipment to haul things down to Oklahoma City. And, I mean, pretty much said it was a very skeptical replacement that turned into something he's very happy with.
So if, if I'm understanding correctly, essentially what we're doing is we're going to, what, what the desire is, is to keep, keep the ladies and the volunteers on-site. But what, what the transition is, is instead of using the city containers, the big white dumpsters that are there, it will be the Replenish bags and then, but they will take it over from there?
Yes.
Is that...
Yes, that's what we're going to propose.
Is there, is there anything, just looking at the item and being ignorant, would there be anything that we collect today that wouldn't go in a Replenish bag, that would go into the...
The glass, so, but they'd take cardboard, so we'd have a trade-off. So, did anybody have any other questions before we motion it and vote on it?
What kind of?
These bags are, what, three foot by three foot by three foot, so they're a cubic yard? Are they like a canvas type material that sits on a rack?
I think it's a heavy nylon.
We do.
I think we provide the racks is my understanding.
All right, we'd have to build the racks, and we're, we were talking about maybe having it where you could put a row, so you can put, like, the one in the back would fill and then you'd put in, we would just have to, the, the people that do it...
[inaudible]
Yeah, so this picture just shows one bag, like in, in what Randy had said last month was, you would take the bag off and put another one on there. We're proposing, working with Mike and maybe building something that you put a bag in, and then when it's filled, you just slide another empty bag in front of it, so when we're out there that, on the Saturdays, we're not moving bags, we're just putting empty bags in front, and then they could fill that one and go that way.
In the back, it just...
Right.
So, so last month, we had five hundred and forty cubic feet of plastic, so that'd be what, roughly fifteen or twenty bags? So we had thirty cubic feet of tin, so one, one bag and a small portion of another. Aluminum was sixty, so two bags. And we're not collecting glass, that was seventy-five cubic feet, so.
So they don't have, we don't have, we're contaminated with aluminum and tin?
When I looked in this to measure, estimate the volume, there was, the tin had aluminum in it, I don't know, there was some tin in the cans, but more aluminum in the tin, so...
So we need to have some bagmen that is...
Right, they probably just throw it in the bag and they just dump the whole bag in, is that correct?
Yes, for the most part.
You don't actually separate it physically, you just throw the whole bag, dump it in there, when they come to, to the drop-off...
When they're standing, they're contaminated?
Yeah.
Right, they're supposed to, a lot of people that, they do it on a regular basis, they'll have one bag and say, these are all aluminum cans and another bag that are all tin cans, but then I'm sure there are some that just bring a bag and it's, they dump the bag in and it's got both, so.
And the biggest difference that people are going to have compared to what we're doing now is that they are going to have to separate their ones and twos. And we'll be there to educate them too, so.
But if we can recycle just the shipping boxes that people receive every week from items being delivered to their house, that'd be a huge difference in what is going to the dump, to the landfill. One item, regardless of the plastic and the other, if you can just put the cardboard in and not send it to the landfill, it would probably give, reduce the number of trips that they have to take by at least a third.
What I was trying to get at is, what kind of card, cardboard are we talking?
It's probably clean, obviously it'd be clean cardboard.
He said any, he said anything when we asked him last month.
Really? Wax?
He wasn't separating wax, I don't know, but he wasn't separating light, dark, corrugated, non-corrugated.
What about grease?
More cardboard and corrugated.
Yeah.
They took all.
They took it all.
All of the things you would not put in there, whether it's corrugated or not, is a piece of box, because that is definitely contaminated, nobody can take those. So anything that's got oil stains or something like that, no, that won't go.
But most delivery boxes are pretty clean.
And my, my, well, to speak to the tin and aluminum issue, what I'm gathering from Matt is, if that happens, it happens, that's not, that's not our responsibility at that point, it's them, it's on them to, to deal with that issue.
Tin then?
Yeah, so, I mean, yes.
If it gets mixed up.
If it, yeah, so if we have, like what Mike described, one guy bringing the bag that just has mixed, mixed cans in it and dumps it in, the aluminum or dumps it in the tin and it's, it's intermixed, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to have to go in and pick that out, that's up to the... I mean, I don't think anybody's going to have to go in and pick that out. It's, that's up to the. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. That, that saves you guys from having to do that because that's on the, the company at that point.
Well, this might, this might be easier to actually separate. You know, once they dump it in that deal and if it's empty, I can't reach all the way down there and grab out the tin and aluminum. If these are in these bags, we might have an easier time to get the tin and the aluminum out or separating the one and two plastics out, so.
But that's, but that's on them, isn't it?
Yes, it'll be on them.
If it rains, are those bags made of such fabric that the water would drain out?
Yes.
Of the bag?
Yes.
Okay. I meant to ask that last time.
Okay, so, to move this along, because I know it's, we've been a while. So, I would like to make a motion that we would accept replenish recycling for tin cans, aluminum cans, plastic one and two and cardboard on a trial basis from August to October. And we're going to, you know, the trial's going to be able to take cardboard, but we're not going to take the glass. So it's either going to have to, maybe we can get it in the newsletter to say we're going to have a change in recycling. It would be the months of August through October, because July, we're not recycling with the heat, and that'll give us time to get set up with replenish, to have everything set up. And then in October, we'd have it back on the agenda to take possible action based on the feedback of the trial run, so.
Was that a motion?
That was the motion.
Second.
Can I get that from you?
I'll write, I'll write it down.
A motion to approve replenish recycling on a trial basis from August to October.
The only thing we took out was the glass on the same motion.
For tin cans, aluminum cans, plastics one and two and cardboard, with the trial run to be reviewed by the council at the October regular meeting.
M O U S C.
Does that sound?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. I want to say something. We've been doing this for thirteen years, around thirteen, fourteen. And I admit I will be happy to speak in home on that Saturday, and I freeze my cojones. But I want to thank you all, all of you. This is really the first time that we felt like we were supported. The rest of these years, we felt like we were just a pain in their rear end, and they, they allowed us to continue. Thank you very, very much.
It hasn't passed yet.
We're sure this is going to take place, it's going to be successful.
If you haven't figured it out already, there's.
Everybody's been hiring somebody outstanding.
There, there's a reason we nick, that she nicknamed herself Stuff. It's because she can tell you to stuff it at any time.
Schmidt?
No, yes, yes.
Yes.
As you called me Steph, I have to do what you told me to do. And since I'm called Steph, I can tell you what I want to do. Evans?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, again.
So, Mayor, is there's? I know I seconded it, but we're going to put in the newsletter for citizens to stop bringing glass completely?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're going to have to put in.
That was part of this, or?
We'll put in the newsletter on the Facebook page, on the web page.
Right, but that was part of this motion on us.
I'm sure we're still going to keep.
Well, that's what you said, for sure.
And, and, and Councilwoman, I do want to address Councilwoman was asking about what goes in the newsletter and whatnot. This is a good opportunity to just sort of note, you have made the policy decision. It's now the mayor and staff's job to carry that out and to carry it out faithfully. And so you don't ever want to get into that point of directing that, and we'll direct that this be done in the newsletter and whatnot. It, it's the mayor and staff's job to carry out the policy decision that you just made here tonight, which means, obviously, your contacts with replenish and the materials that they've got will be very helpful, so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel and then they can figure out how to get all that out there.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion possible action on supplemental additional appropriation of twenty thousand dollars in the CIP fund to line item library parking lot for the paving and engineering fees. Acceptance of recommendation to award the bid to Silver Star Construction in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars for the parking lot. This came in, we had put in there originally to put two hundred thousand dollars in there for engineering fees and the construction of the parking lot. Parking lot itself came in at two hundred and seven thousand dollars, so it came in higher than what we were hoping it would, but we need to get this finished.
I'll make a motion to accept the additional twenty thousand and to accept Silver Star's bid.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second that.
Evans?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Tucker?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yay. Item number nine, discussion of possible action approval of the SRB agreement for engineering related to the James Cap Northwood sixty-third intersection. Approved supplemental additional appropriation of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to the line item traffic pedestrian control runner, intersection sixty-third. Craig, I'll let you take this one.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This has been going on for a long time. Obviously, we accepted back, and I think it was maybe June of twenty-one, I don't exactly when, and a, a residual amount of the S T P B G funds in order to build the intersection. We had made application two years prior to try to get the funds to do this intersection when they were building caps, but our applications didn't rate high enough. In April of twenty-two, we actually came to the, the council to increase because of cost of the intersection. And we just have not, even though we did the resolution in April of twenty-two and we increased in order to cover those construction costs, we have never brought to you the fees for the engineering actually of that traffic intersection. It will be a full intersection, pedestrian improvements, which include buttons and signs, traffic signals, and ADA compliance. And so this is basically the, the design fee for traffic engineering and the civil engineering required to do the sidewalk along this intersection.
And it's very much needed. Their kids are on the north side now going to the south side.
Yeah. Do you know when they're going to do that?
We are in process. I mean, we have a sub consultant that's a traffic engineer that originally did the traffic study in support of it, that's ready to move forward, base plan. So it's just a process of the, because it's federal funding, ODOT has to do the administration. I, I know I hate to say that to this council with MacArthur going on, but it's just the way it is. So it's a process of design review by ODOT, then go to letting process. I would anticipate, Councilman, that it'll probably be spring by the time all that happens. So I don't know that it'll be accomplished through this school year, but with this, you know, fee appropriation, we'll be able to move forward quickly on it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, motion?
Motion to approve the appropriation.
I'll second that.
Ryan?
Yay.
Myers?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes. Didn't take too long to go through the. Discussion possible act, item number ten, discussion possible action on approval of the SRB agreement for the sanitary sewer improvement engineering related to the ARPA funds, engineering bidding and construction administration. This will be paid out of the ARPA funds.
Okay, so, third item. Obviously, the city of War Acres received some American Recovery Act funds for, specifically for infrastructure of sanitary sewer water lines and, and as we accepted that, I believe, I don't remember if it was January or February when we actually deposited, but I remember the council that Pam actually said, yeah, that the first year of appropriations have already been received. We met with the mayor, with Mike, to consider what would be the best use of those funds. We do have the trunk line within the city limits of War Acres that go to the Bethany War Acres, you know, wastewater plant that run through the old Ione Branch or what currently is James Capes. We had done about three hundred and eighty feet done, that's a poor grammar, I apologize. We had accomplished a pipe bursting of really poor trunk line through that section, but there's still approximately eight hundred feet or so that needs to be finished up to, in fact, I think it's a little over a thousand feet up to sixty-third street. And so this fee would allow us to complete the pipe bursting of that line from a twenty-one inch concrete line to twenty-four inch HP trunk line and allow us to complete that through that section of property to improve that sanitary sewer trunk line. And so these fees are all based off of the Oklahoma Water Resources Board guidelines, as well as Department of Commerce that set aside, they give, and I think it's probably in your packet, but all the fees were based off the percentages that are allowable for preliminary engineering, for design, for construction management, and so that's what this is, to allow us to move forward on that.
And when he says it was in poor condition, part of it wasn't even there, so.
And this, this pipe bursting will, is done without having to disturb the soil, right?
That, to, to a certain extent, you obviously have an entry port and a, a tie-in to the manhole where you have to go down and actually receive that particular stinger, that instrument that goes through the pipe bursting, but the majority of it is trenchless. So if you were familiar when we did it from Fifty-Eighth Street North, the tie-in to the line that was replaced during the construction of James Cap, the majority of it is done trenchless. So it's able to be done without digging all that through the creek, creek bed, so. And, and I will say, and I don't know, Mayor, I hope, not overstepping, but, you know, we meet with Mike and the mayor, try to evaluate, you know, the system and where the best use that eight hundred thousand, I think that there's another, you know, year of that total grant. But, so we'll evaluate again once we complete this to see what's best.
You were supposed to get another eight hundred and sixty-three thousand or something on that project, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the
Thank you.
Agreement.
I'll second.
Evans?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
And I, I apologize, but I want to all out answer Councilman Schmidt's second question that he didn't ask. The timing of this should go a little bit quicker than the ODOT, because we have previously done video investigations of this line back when we did it as part of the James Cap. And so that investigation is out in front to where we can actually get started early on this. So hopefully this will go quickly with the design phase and where we can get it out for letting, so.
So we've done items ten, eleven and twelve, so we're going to thirteen, questions and comments from the council. We'll start with Judy.
Nothing. I just think the Route sixty-six celebration was very well done. Thank you very much. I enjoyed myself. Saw many of you out. I think next year we have to have a city council booth, though.
Ever what?
City council booth.
Okay.
That's all.
That's all. John?
I don't have any issues today. I'm pleased to see the recycling go through. I think that'll be a big deal. I'd like to get the city out of the business and get somebody else in the business.
I like it too. Mike?
I want to thank Pam for this budget thing she gave us. So, you know, because we talked about it last month, it, you know, when we're approving items, it's good to see how much the, we're at and where we went. So I wanted to, to be in record that we really appreciate Pam putting this together. I thought it was just going to be a balance. I didn't know, well, she's going to break it out the way she did. I mean, this is really, it's a really good job.
Very good.
So, I'm not going to, I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about it, but I want to thank everybody who was out here at, I mean, everybody, the whole city was out there at that Route sixty-six thing. I thought it was really, it was incredible for residents that came out to see it, so. That's about it.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Okay. I have absolutely nothing, except for I had every intention of going to the Route sixty-six festival and being out there and representing the city and away in the deal, but I had a lot of things go up and I have to apologize for not making it.
Were you in the air conditioning?
No, absolutely not. I was not. I was dealing with some other issues. So, other than that, I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Ryan?
I agree. The sixty-six celebration was amazing. I didn't make it out there till a little after lunchtime, when it was really nice and toasty. And, but it was good. There was a lot of vendors. Everybody was very friendly, all the, all the booths under the tent. Everybody I talked to was very positive about their experience being there and they really appreciated it. My hats off to all the behind-the-scenes work that was done, because this is not something that can just happen. There's a lot of planning and stuff that.
Three or four hours went into it.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of planning and stuff that took place, and I, I really, I wanted to recognize that and appreciate that as well. I also, I, I appreciate Mike and Judy and Matt and the ladies, all the work that, and Mike, all the work that has been done to do the research for this recycling stuff, to get that going. I, I think it, it might be a little chaotic the first month, but as, as the citizens that, that utilize it get used to the new routine, I think it will be a great experience for them. So I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. One, and just the, what is the status of the repair? The, the Waracre sign that's at Fiftieth and MacArthur has been hit by a car several months ago, and it just, still is just sitting there alongside the road. Do, do we know what the timeline could be for that?
Yeah, it's about the size of a DeLisi block, so it's like twenty-five hundred pounds.
Oh, yeah.
So there, there were some picking eyes in it, so I've got the picking eyes at the yard. I had to order those. And there, it was wired. It had some LED lights, so of course the wire runs through the center of it. And it's on the list, I just haven't made it over there to do it, so.
Is the, whoever hit it, I, I bet they don't have insurance.
Well, there was no car. We found a piece of a fender and somebody said, hey, what happened? It was during the snowstorm.
You didn't, you didn't trace that fender chief and get the culprit?
Looked like a Frontier.
They can do it on NCIS.
We had a hit-and-run accident last week where part of the bumper was left, and there was actually a part of the van was on there, and we tracked them down, but no such luck on this.
No such luck with that.
It was the same person that had my tire.
And they damaged part of the top piece, and so I think we're going to try to fiberglass it. If we tried to buy it, it was probably really expensive.
Pretty much every TV show I've ever seen can do it.
I'm, I'm sure.
Pretty much every TV show I've ever seen can do that.
And then the other, the other question is, do we have a, are, is our MacArthur project still on schedule to be completed sometime in July, or is it?
I don't want the mayor to have to answer that, so.
Thank you.
I, I actually did meet with the District Four Construction Engineer today. I had conversation about that. They had requested the contractor to give an updated schedule several weeks ago. I think it, the schedule finally came to fruition this past week and know that it, it will be August. I don't know exactly the date, but I'm going to follow up more often. The, the engineer did tell me that he would meet with. They had a meeting two months ago to say, you need to speed up. I don't know that we've seen a whole lot of difference. They're going to meet again to make sure that that schedule continues to be updated. And so I will try to follow up to find out. But it is not expected to be completed in the month of July.
It does seem like a lot of the base layer is done. But the problem that they have is now there's two double yellow lines, so it does create a little bit of confusion on which, where, when you turn out of one of those side streets, if it, if it doesn't have those cones there or, or a barrier that says, don't drive here, then you, you'll end up driving into oncoming traffic if you're not.
And that's a, that's a, obviously, construction traffic control maintenance issue that I can talk with the resident engineer who's over that job and inspector to make sure that they can try to increase the tapers or possible barrels in that area where it's confusing. And that is a maintenance item. Even, even if some of those lines need to be removed, that should be part of the contractor's responsibility, so I'll see if I can follow up with that. So thanks for bringing that up.
I sent a real friendly little email yesterday, so.
Yeah, well, I
Welcome back.
Someone in my household, when it, when it first changed over, realized that they were driving on the wrong side of the road and.
Someone in your household? Someone in your household?
Just.
There's only two drivers in your household.
That's right, and it, and it wasn't, but I think she's listening on the, uh, so I'm not gonna say anything. That's all I have, thank you.
That's all you have?
That's it.
Can I go now? My item number one is, the grocery store that was looking at the Five Acres behind the Golden Corral has pulled out and is no longer looking at this site. I still can't divulge their name as they're looking at two other sites in War Acres. One particular site is looking very good, so Judy, you're, I'm not sure it's gonna work out any better, but it, let's hope it will. I would like to thank the council for writing their representatives, they heard us and they pulled the last two bills, H B ten sixteen and H B ten seventeen. O M L has made a list of all the bills that have passed and been signed by the governor. I made you a list of the bills that affect municipal governments for the court, police, fire or city hall, and those are at your stations tonight. I sent the link to each of your emails this afternoon, so you should have those in your emails. Uh, Route Sixty-six update, the War Acres Route Sixty-six festival went off beating all categories. If you've read my Facebook posting, you'll hear this again, we blended this event with Bethany and Yukon, and no offense to those cities, but we blew them out of the water. We even blew out Oklahoma Cities on their triple A. We had the largest crowd we've ever had, it was estimated at five thousand people, and for a city of ten thousand people, that was absolutely phenomenal. We had the most vendors ever, we had the most cars in a car show ever, the most food trucks ever, and thanks to Mike Turmer, we had the most porta-potties ever.
Yay, that was good, yeah. And hand sanitizer.
I'd like to thank everyone in the council for making this a huge success, I've heard nothing but good comments on it. I'd like to thank the council and the staff for all that you do and all that you did to help on this, you all made my job much easier. And one last item, usually we hang around city hall and talk for a while, and you're welcome to do that, but you have to do that outside, as I'll be locking it up immediately after the meeting, as I have to drive Durant and I have to be there at eight-thirty tomorrow morning, and it's a three-hour drive, meaning I have to leave at five-thirty tomorrow morning, meaning I have to get up at four-thirty, so thank you, goodbye and good night. Make a motion.
You don't have to go home, but you.
I'm adjourned.
I'll second.
We've got two more meetings.
I know, I know.
Myers?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yay.
Evans?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
Mayor?
Yes. Call the City of War Acres Public Works Authority meeting to order, uh, declare quorum, consent dockets, item A, B and C, and item three, anything to be removed from the consent.
Motion to approve. Go ahead. A, B, C.
We've got stereo.
Evans?
Yes.
Ryan?[1727.62]